We normally meet at 6:00 PM on the first Wednesday of the month, but given the current COVID situation, we find the need to deviate from that practice. Members of the board are volunteers from the community who have been elected to serve up to a three-year term. Our board consists of five members. To transact any legal business of the board, a meeting must be publicly noticed, and a quorum of the board is required consisting of a minimum of three members. The board, the five members are myself, Robert Mancher, Tammy Fareed, Vice Chair, Brooke Arthur, our Board Secretary, Amy Kellner is our Lead Policy Representative, and Carol Roy is our Board Representative to the Hollis School, to the, that is, the Hollis Budget Committee. Our Recording Secretary is Dawn McMillan. With that, I will look for agenda adjustments.
Rob, I think I would like to ask that our public input tonight be like we did last time, brought to after the presentation of the reopening, revised reopening school buildings plan. Hopefully, we can answer any questions that the public might have in advance.
So, my understanding then is we moved the, moved the public input, but we're also going to have our chance to ask our questions first and then have, open the floor?
Correct. Yep, so the revised plan, we can ask some questions, then public input.
Okay. Open it up for-
And then if we need to deliberate again.
For agreement or objections?
Yep. I have an addition as well.
Okay. So, we'll, we're going to move that way. Please note it and keep me honest.
Can I ask a question about that? Does that mean after the public input, we'd have a further discussion?
We can absolutely have a further discussion to deliberate on any input we've received. So, I'm fine with that. Okay, we have another change?
Yes, I'd like to add under deliberations, an adjustment for the school calendar that I handed out and put on each of the board members. It's part of the revised reopening packet, but it was just completed after discussions the other day.
Okay.
So, it didn't make the packet.
All right. Where would you like that?
We can just put that as the last deliberative item.
Okay, so noted. Any other agenda adjustments at this time? I'd like to move on to the approval of the meeting minutes of June 20.
So, I'd move to approve the meeting minutes from the July 20 meeting?
Yep. Take a second.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay. Are there any changes?
I don't think, I don't believe there were any changes.
So, the only thing I'm aware of is, in our public input on the 20th-
Correct.
We had somebody from another town speaking at our, well, we believe that we had another person from the town. Actually, I had confirmed that through watching another school board meeting, and the person in question said where they were from. So, I'm not sure how we handle that input and how it was recorded, so I'm-
It does appear in the minutes.
And it's, unless the video has been edited, the portion is still there as well.
Yeah, and I read it in the minutes.
Yeah, so I'm wondering how we disposition that.
Andy?
If, if I could suggest tabling the minutes, because I think I recall the speaker that you're in question, speaking at the co-op and providing addresses in both communities, which some residents do own properties in both Brookline and Hollis.
Okay.
So, I just suggest, there's no pending issue on the minutes. I table them. We can ask Dawn to do a little research, because obviously, if she is a resident of both communities, she had every right to be here.
Then that's fine. I just want to make sure we have the full-
Yep.
Picture and that we're dealing with our meeting minutes appropriately.
Correct. Yep.
How do, so we have a live motion on the floor here.
Can I retract my motion on the floor?
Or we-
Or change it down?
We can vote it down.
Don't throw them.
What do you suggest?
You can do either. You could just do all in favor.
I, I don't like stacking motions, so why don't we just, I'll call for all in favor of the motion that's currently on the floor. All opposed?
Okay. So, we'll bring them back.
And do we need a motion to table?
I moved to table the minutes from the July 20 meeting of the Hollis School Board, barring more information.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, nominations, resignations, correspondence.
I don't have any nominations or resignations, but I just wanted to take a quick second and do a little correspondence to the board and to the community. Dear community members, I want to thank you for taking the time to share your input, both those in support and those opposed to our new wording on masks. The proposed change regarding masks, not yet approved by the board, is based on discussions with our workforce. Staff is concerned and express the view that masks add another layer of protection. Staff has asked us to require masks. Mask breaks will be built into the daily schedule, and flexibility will be provided to both the administration and staff to decide mask breaks based on what is taking place instructionally. We will also be increasing our recess outside learning opportunities, which will reduce the use of masks. I do not envision our students wearing a mask for seven hours a day. Students will wear masks, which mean a mask like I have on, a face shield, one of the gators, which is a pull-up and pull-down device, or a face covering. So, it's a very wide-open piece for what works for that family. Students will wear those when they board the bus, enter school, walk through corridors, or when their teacher or administrator asks them to be worn. In the classroom, teachers will provide breaks. Students will take them off at lunch and during any outdoor lessons or recess. We will be monitoring all aspects of our plan and will evaluate any changes based on local conditions. Our state data is trending in a positive direction, and if the situation warrants, we will make adjustments prior to September 9. The words in the plan have changed, but our intent has not. We are currently evaluating our wording and will be willing to make further recommendations at our next meeting. Just so the board is aware, Tuesday night, the Brookline Board approved the plan, but they asked us to take masks out so that we would have time to come back with clarification on the wording for them, and then they would vote, vote on that at their August, approximately sometime the week of the 10th to the 17th. When we looked at our own language that we wrote, we realized that maybe it didn't convey what we wanted to convey, but when you are writing in, in the space of doing the document all the time, sometimes you don't necessarily see what you wrote. So, that's our stance. I, I just want to really emphasize to the community that their input has been greatly appreciated. Many have assisted in a variety of ways with regard to educational questions, with regard to medical questions, and it's been extremely helpful to have professionals who have greater knowledge than I do on specific areas. So, I really, whether it was positive or negative is not the point. Getting feedback is important. And if it's okay with the board, I'll turn it over to Bob and Gina to go through the revised plan for you.
Please.
Okay.
Thank you so much. So, here we are, back a week later, to present simply some of the changes and then have our building admin share some of the building-specific pieces of information to help kind of paint the picture for you. So, I'm going to go through and look through some of the red, underlined pieces that were the updates. Mr. Corey just went through the face covering, so I don't need to restate this. Daily symptom monitoring. So, this piece, we added some clarifying language because some folks had some questions about exactly, what does that look like? So, both students and staff would be required to answer these questions, and these questions will change as the recommendations from DHHS have changed, and so this language will be sent to our community advisory group to identify the exact questions. But essentially, these are the questions that some of our students who have been participating in school onsite, are a limited number of students, these are the questions they've been answering since the end of March. If the answer is yes to any of these, then the student stays home, and if the answer is no, then the student can come to school. And I want to explain what that looks like. The daily symptom monitoring form is accessed the same way we access report cards, or how we will be doing registration beginning this Saturday. So, it's through Power School, and it's a form, and you simply say yes or no. What that will do is that will be, we will be able to generate a report that goes to administration so that the administrators can take a look at every morning, those students who have said yes, the yes list, will go to the nurse's office, so the nurse can follow-up with all those families to get more information and to try to better understand, is this the common cold, you know, what type of follow-up will need to take place? Does the actual symptom require a quarantine, or can we expect the child to return the next day? So, those are questions for the nurse and the family, and we'll get more information. If the answer is a no to all these, the student shows up, goes to school, and everything is great. If there is a not answered, then we're going to need to reach out to all those families individually. So, certainly, we would appreciate everyone completing the daily symptom monitoring form on time.
Early last week, the Department of Health and Human Services updated their guidance for public schools. We were not able to unpack the guidance in time to get it into the first draft of our plan. It was important for us to be able to vet their guidelines through our community group as well as our school nurses. So, we have had the opportunity to do that, and as a result of the feedback that we received from the community group and the nurses, we are going to fully implement the Department of Health and Human Services guidelines. So, all DHHS guidelines for schools for symptomatic students and staff will be adopted, and it includes, and this language is specifically copied and pasted from the language that DHHS has used, any student or staff who is symptomatic and confirmed with COVID-19, at least 10 days have passed since symptoms first appeared, and at least 24 hours have passed since the last fever, and that's without fever-reducing medication, and symptoms have improved. Additionally, any student or staff member who is symptomatic, but the person refuses testing, will have the same as if it were a confirmed case of COVID. Any student or staff member who is asymptomatic but tests positive for COVID-19, 10 days, assuming the person remains asymptomatic. If the person develops symptoms, then C above. Now, this is really important, and I want to point out that our nurses abide by a variety of guidelines established by the Department of Health and Human Services. And every day, our nurses are put in a position where they need to evaluate students and symptoms to determine if it meets a certain set of guidelines. So, I'll give you a really good example that will come up this year. We may have students that are sent to the nurse's office because they have symptoms that may look like COVID-19. They could have a runny nose. We have to look at the student's medical history to determine if there possibly could be a child that has allergies, seasonal allergies. You know, a student that has GI issues might have a history of GI issues, and our nurses are really the experts who are able to take the guidelines that are in place and be able to determine if the situation in front of them presents itself as, as a COVID issue or as some unrelated medical issue. Additionally, any student or staff who's traveled outside of New England, and again, New England being defined as New Hampshire, Vermont, Maine, Massachusetts, Connecticut, and Rhode Island, will have to quarantine for 14 days. I think this is a very important point for people to keep in mind. This is specific to staff and students. So, if you have a family and mom or dad travels for business, they travel outside of New England, the family does not need to quarantine, but staff and students would need to quarantine for 14 days.
Sorry?
Additionally, a question that came up is this notion of pivoting. And the models that we've created, the three models that we've created, allow for us to be very nimble and to move in and out of remote learning and physical school environments very quickly. And the question repeatedly comes up, well, what determines pivoting? What situation would present itself that would result in us having to move from physical school to remote or vice versa? And the answer is not black and white. There's a number of variables that you need to look at, and I'll give the example of early March, when the decision was made by the superintendent to close the school for a single day to do a deep clean after we suspected that a staff member may have been exposed to COVID. That day entailed a lot of conversations as a senior leadership team, with the building administration, there were, there were calls with the Department of Education, the Department of Education was consulting with the governor, we were in contact with the Department of Health and Human Services. The feedback that they gave us was, they didn't think it was necessary for us to close, but we had the ability to make that decision ourselves, and our superintendent took it upon himself to close the school for an abundance of caution. It really is that collaboration between local school agencies and state agencies to be able to make the determination about when best to pivot or close our schools. But additionally, there is data that we will look at and consider. We'll look at local and state infection rates, we will look at potential known exposure to our students and to our staff, and then another big consideration is workforce availability. We need to be able to have teachers to be able to teach in the physical school environment or the remote learning environment, and that workforce is going to be critically important to the operation of our, of our schools.
All right. So, we also had some questions about more specifics for both, or for direct instruction and remote learning. So, I'm not going to go into too many details because the presentation that follows will go into more details for you, but the direct instruction will follow the in-person instruction model in regard to the schedule and the expectations for learning. So, it is synchronous with a very specific schedule, starting with morning meeting. The session length and daily frequency are based on district-determined best practice, meaning kindergartners are not going to sit in front of a computer for seven hours, but they will have a very structured schedule for the day. The pacing will mirror in-person instruction, and we are going to propose some days of collaboration to ensure that our remote teachers are keeping in pace with our in-person teachers. The class period is more for, for the co-op discussion, however, I will go to elementary classes. We'll have daily live instruction, we'll have morning meeting via Zoom, we will have a math-focused lesson, we might then have small group instruction, we have ELA daily, we will have specials daily, and either science or social studies depending on the We also have added some expectations around what that looks like. So, if your child is participating in Zoom instruction, we want to make sure that we are following the law and not recording the Zoom session from your phone or, or from your computer, that it's really just live interaction, and we're making our families aware of the fact that it is illegal to go ahead and record that without everyone's knowledge.
So, again, going back to having the availability of workforce, we have actually added into our plan a dedicated substitute, five-day-a-week substitute for each one of the buildings. We're going to do two, proposing two at the high school just because of the size. And really, this is a, is a full-time substitute that the school administration would be responsible for determining what their workday looked like, because there might be a need to cover instruction in a classroom, there could be need to assist with supervision for student lunches. There also could be the need for supervision, again, when we've created these auxiliary nurse spaces, the issue of supervision comes up. We have, we have one nurse, how are we going to supervise two areas? The dedicated nurse, the dedicated substitute could be deployed in a variety of different capacities to be able to support the building as directed by the building principal.
Okay. So, some more information about our additional cleaning protocol. We have hydrogen peroxide-based product, which is on the CDC list for cleaning. Our folks will clean all the surfaces with a mister and then use our electrostatic sprayer to deliver the peroxide-based product, and what it does is it clings to all surfaces based on the fact that it's electrostatic. So, you, you spray it with this mister, and then you close the door and walk away, and then all surfaces in that room have been sanitized, and we mark it as such as being sanitized. We also have some cleaning protocol videos as part of our professional development for our custodial crews.
It's good to see you. Paula is Vicki, the principal at Hollis Primary School. Can everybody hear me? Am I talking into the microphone okay? I'm good? Okay.
A little sound off.
A little louder? All right. So, we, Candy and I have collaborated to be able to share with you what reopening our schools in Hollis will look like. Obviously, we have a diverse group of students. I have very young students. As they get older, there's different needs, so we want to give everybody sort of an idea of what that's going to look like. Before we start into the nitty-gritty of things, we have a, we collaborated with the Brookline principals and created a video of what arrival and dismissal will look like for students so that we can maybe ease the minds of our families and let them know that we really are thinking of everybody and that we're trying to make everybody feel as welcome as possible when they come into school.
This reopening of schools video in Brookline and Hollis will cover busing, instructional areas, outside activity, and physical and social distancing measures.
Buses will arrive in the morning with windows open for proper airflow. Students entering the bus will wear masks and fill the bus from back to front, keep six feet social distance, and stagger seats when possible. If you don't have a mask, one will be given to you. Siblings will be sitting together. During the bus ride to school, students should remain seated, keep hands, feet, and belongings in their seats. Students will exit the bus from front to back, continuing to keep social distance as much as possible. Students should remain seated until it's their turn to exit. Upon entering the classroom, students will be given hand sanitizer.
When entering the hallway at any time, students will be monitored for physical and social distancing of six feet apart. Various markers will be placed in the building to illustrate six-foot markings. Students will be taught that each tile square are one foot long, making every six tiles six feet. Buildings will be reducing traffic flow for attendance, notes, and specials.
All desks have been spaced six feet apart, both horizontally and vertically, to allow for social distancing. In addition, space has been provided at the front of the classroom for the teacher to be six feet from the students. All students will have their own belongings and supplies at their desk. No supplies will be shared.
While outside, students will maintain six feet for social distancing. Visual reminders, such as having one student per platform on this slide, will help support that. Staff will have walkie-talkies, emergency backpacks, and will be well-versed in related safety protocols.
Classroom teachers will have the option to bring students outside for instruction. Students can use a beach towel, yoga mat, or even hula hoops for ensuring physical and social distancing during instruction.
At the end of the day, you'll be packed up and ready to go when your bus is called. When you hear that bus number, you'll sanitize your hands and head outside to your bus. You may have to wait a bit outside, and if you do, we want you to wait six feet apart to be physically distanced for safety. If you have siblings, you can stand together as you wait to board the bus. When you get onto your bus, you'll be sitting in the same seat that you have for your morning ride into school. This is your assigned seat. When your stop arrives, wait for the bus to be completely stopped before you stand to head out to your after-school fun.
Thank you for watching our reopening plan video. For more information on SAU41's reopening plan, please visit sau41.org. Thank you.
Thanks, Gina. Are you, thank you. Are you, are you doing it? All right. So, hi, everyone. I'm Candy. Probably already know that. Just, we want to reiterate a few of the things that have come out in the reopening plan, that masks or facial coverings are required, and it says periodic mask breaks will be provided. Well, we're going to have at least five a day. There's three times we're going to be encouraging or asking top-down, you'll take your classes outside. Then there'll be snack, then there'll be lunch, and then anytime, like, I almost called you Dr. Corey, because we did get an email about you, Dr. Torrey. Andy has said, you know, if you need to go out, we're going to look at a time that works for you in your classroom. You might be like, okay, today we need another break. Let's walk around, let's take five minutes, take our masks off. We can be contemplating a question or problem-solving and coming back in. So, we're going to be as creative as we can to give a lot of breaks to our students and our staff, you know, going outside and getting some fresh air. And even in winter, we can do that. We all have, you know, we're prepared. Student services, specific student exemptions for face coverings will be accounted for within those IAP and 504s and health plans. The procedures for attendance, notes, and specials have all been adjusted. So, a lot of that paper going back and forth, we have those permanent notes up here, we don't want, we're not going to desanitize all those, like, it's really hard, so we're going to change those so that it's safe for everyone. Our school lunches will be delivered to the classrooms as well as our breakfast, and depending on what we need, we might eat inside or out. When we're outside, and you all have seen and heard us talk about the safety measures, and we do appreciate over the last few years, we've had, all have walkie-talkies now, we have emergency backpacks, we have the ability to go remotely off-site if we need to in case of emergency and make sure we're all safe. So, we will continue to do that, even though we're outside more, it doesn't mean that we're lessening what we need to do. For the health, you heard Gina talk a little bit and Bob talk about an auxiliary room, and at both buildings, we're going to have the nurse's health office, kind of for healthy visits. I scrape my knee, or I, you know, needed Tums or whatever, but for kids who are showing symptoms, there's going to be these auxiliary rooms that the nurse will be monitoring. What we do want to just highlight is students returning from an absence who have been checked by a physician, and that documentation has been shared with us, email, fax, they can return to school that next day without a visit to the health office, because we already know they're okay to return. It's students who had an absence who have not seen a physician, we are asking that they don't arrive at school until after we're finished carpool and bus drop-off around 8:45, because every student returning that we don't know about has to be seen by our nurse. And to have everybody weaving in and out, it's just going to be a little bit more chaos to what we're anticipating. So, the students are to be walked in with a parent or guardian, which means you're going to have to park. Finding parking at carpool is going to be hard, so we're asking that that happens. Every time your child's out, do we think it's realistic you're going to see a physician every time your child's out? We do not. We know that there's going to be times, you're just, they were just a little sick, but we've got to check and make sure that there's nothing underlying there.
We wanted to show a few pictures to ensure and let everyone know that we are thinking about all the safety measures. So, we are making sure that desks are six feet apart, both this way and that way. We have markings outside the building if we need them for social distancing, especially when we're coming in from recess, things like that. Our classrooms are being cleared of other materials, and although it looks a little dry, know that we haven't, you know, decorated yet. We are still an elementary school, and it's not going to look exactly completely clear without any fun in there. All staff wear ID badges, so we'll be able to know who the person is. I know we're not going to be able to see faces. It's important that, you know, we make eye contact with everybody and that, you know, students get to recognize who we are. Our face masks being worn, and when they're not being worn, it's recommended that they are in some kind of plastic bag when they're not being worn to, for safety, so we plan on distributing those materials as well. And all of this stuff will be reviewed with our staff. We have, we have time with them, and we are communicating with our staff for, for input, because the more input that we get, the more we can make things feasible and doable in the classroom, making sure that we're abiding by all the, within the structure that we've been given. Transportation. So, because we are in COVID times, arrival and dismissal do have to be changed a little bit to ensure that social distance. Car arrival is going to look very different at Hollis Primary School. We are working on a plan to help alleviate the backup traffic. We anticipate that there's going to be more cars in carpool line, if you can imagine that. And so, we are looking at two different ways of cars exiting the building so that we can flow traffic along. This will also help kids entering the building being social-distanced by different doors and such entering the building. The front of the building will remain for the buses, but we have, will have separate entrances for each bus as they unload, and the group of buses will go off together. Our car dismissal time is going to start earlier this year at 2:35. There is no way we're going to be able to get carpool done socially-distanced and call everybody and get them to their cars by having everybody lined up in the hallway ready to go. So, we have to rethink that, and we're going to start that a little earlier this year so that hopefully our carpool can be dismissed before our buses go out, or at least the carpool lane will be very small. before our buses go out, or at least the carpool lane will be very small by the time the buses arrive. Candy and I have worked together to work out our timing to make sure that we are able to complete everything that we need to complete. And in the long run, we really want to make sure that we're being safe, and it does cut into our, our timing in the schedule. But I think we have to put safety as our top priority this year.
Just say, one sort of big change for Hughes is that we used to be able to have parents drop kids off at 8 o'clock and have them all mix up here in the cafeteria. We're not going to be able to do that this year because we do want to keep that poding in place. So, our staff, our professional staff are here from 8:15 to 3:20. That's their contracted day. So, they will start right at 8:15, and as soon as the 8:15 bell rings, kids will come in. When the buses roll up, no matter what time, they will come right into the building. We are going to do the same thing as HPS and have different doors available for our fourth, fifth, and sixth graders to come in so that there's, if it was a full building and everyone came back, there'd only be 100 kids coming in each door. Depends on what numbers that we do get. And then, when the buses start rolling up from the primary school, typically it's around 3:10, and we're usually done by 3:20. And on days that it's a little bit later, the staff will stay. But if it becomes always late, then we have to make another plan for that because it's beyond their contract.
Besides recess time, we've thought about our outdoor spaces and are going to be asking our teachers to have a outside time of learning besides during PE and environmental science. We are lucky that we have the huge SAU fields. We have classroom trails which have been actually beautifully updated and cleaned this year, so we're very excited about that. Our playgrounds, basketball courts, Candy has her track up here, our different pavement areas. We've been thinking about lots of spaces outside, rotating schedules, and we will make sure that classrooms have the ability to rotate for recess time, but then also choose for when they, what space they'd like to use when they want to go outside for an academic time. It's me again. So, one of the things that we keep getting a question on is what is it going to look like when my child goes to school? What's the academic day going to look like? What are we focused on? This is a very sample schedule of what it may look like at HPS, not really specific to any grade level. But you do see that we will have two recesses, which we've always had, in the morning and in the afternoon. Kids will also be asked to have some kind of time outside for an academic area. We want to make sure that we're focusing on our social-emotional needs of our kids. It's a very different environment for them, and they're coming back from a different environment. So, we want to make sure that there's time, if needed, to plan for that. We can make that time flexible, but we always do our morning meeting where we connect with each other and make sure that we're, we're good and we're ready to go for the day. We have other concerns about academic gaps and what happened during remote learning, and we want to make sure we have time for that as well. And our social studies and science time continues to be in there.
So, this is a sample Hughes schedule, and I've just done some pop-ups there about, you know, where students will eat and outside recess. At the upper, we're going to have the teachers kind of self-select and sign up for what works best for you to take your class outside. We are going to have a recess, and then we'll have other outside times, whether that's an academic time or another recess. It's going to be dependent on the teachers. And then, any other time that they want. Our, our focus is really going to be how do we make this as normal as we can for our students? And we want to get books back to them, but we want it to be safe. We want to get them into band and PE and all those fun things that they were excited about when they left. We're going to do wing awards, but they'll be differently. It won't be maybe a whole giant group of 100 kids in here getting awards. We'll find ways to make that amazing for them. So, we will have our academic times, our specials. We will have lunch. One of the really great things about lunch here is the kids really love to self-select guidance lunch bunch, and they came from all different classes to have lunch with Mr. Dano. However, we can't really do that right now. So, Mr. Dano's going to eat lunch every, every day of the week with us, with a group of students so that he sees those students every single week. And so, instead of having a lunch bunch with two kids from one class and two kids from another, that will be a time that he's connecting with them and just kind of chilling out, having another conversation, and then there'll be other guidance times in there. And then, like Paula, we'll be dismissing a little bit early. So, then, the next question we keep getting, sorry, the next question we kept getting is about remote teaching. So, what does that really look like compared to what's happening in the building? So, I didn't call it live because guess what? We're all live, so whether you're remote or in the building, it's live. So, you'll see here, I refer to it as in-building versus remote teaching. There will be synchronous classes. That means we need your students, your children, to show up. If they don't show up for a math lesson, they're absent. They need to be there. Then there'll be small groups, breaks. We'll have time for band to happen for our remote learners, social-emotional learning lessons. We will have social studies, science. They will follow the same trajectories. So, if the fifth graders are doing the American Revolution and it's a month-long study, our remote teachers will be doing American Revolution for a month-long study. And when it comes time to switch that. And then, students will be given time to work independently as well in small groups. Our specialists, right now, based on the schedule that I've made up for the upper, they'll be zooming. They'll be mandatory specialist classes. You can't say, I'm too busy. I don't want to go to art. Well, art's part of what we do here. There are standards for every one of those specialist areas. It might look a little different than in the building because there's not enough time for the specialists to do three or four more classes. But there is enough time for them to do two or three more a week, maybe not five or six or 10. And then, we want kids to be finishing their work, just like in the building. Kids get time to work on those tasks. When they're off Zoom lessons, they'll be doing some tasks, and then they'll come back in. And the length of the day is marrying what an in-building versus remote is.
So, the other question, the other, other question we get is about pivot days. And pivot days happen when we unexpectedly have to go from an in-building day to a remote day for all students. But everything will be synchronous, the schedule, attendance will be taken. We will be utilizing tools in the classroom that kids are using remotely. So, when they do have to go remote, it should be, the transition should be done well because kids will be familiar with the tools because they're using them in the classroom. We will have dedicated time for specialists, which is required, and we will follow a pre-planned schedule based on grade level, and we will have that shared with families. Traditional snow days may still happen when we have power outages and we really get a dumping. But we anticipate that snow day events may make driving, the ones that make driving to school unsafe, but when the sun is shining in the afternoon, may turn into pivot days or remote learning days where we will be learning at home. We think that these days will become a little more easy to, to transition as we get moving along in the school year. But I think our staff is very well-versed and able to prepare the students for those unexpected days. And that's the end of our presentation.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to just give you a couple pieces of information and then work through the schedule. For a number of months now, I've been working with the Hollis Police Chief, Joe Hebecky. Joe has been working very hard to secure another grant. And at the August 10th Board of Selectment meeting, he is going to be conveying that has, he has received a grant that will provide us with a second community liaison slash SRO officer. And that individual will be working with Officer Bergeron at the high school. So, we'll have two, basically, full-time officers working with the schools, which should help us out tremendously with the traffic issues and those type of things that are coming. So, that's already in place. And I, I know the selectmen were very much in favor of that when they encouraged Joe to go for the grant. So, I don't necessarily see any issues with that, but we'll wait for their vote.
So, this is a trained officer?
It'll be a Hollis police officer.
Police officer, okay. Because I was a little confused by the different terminology that you used other than SRO.
Well, the, the grant, under community liaison, that individual will do more than just traditional SRO pieces. And that allows Joe to make further use of that individual during the summer months when we're not in session and things like that.
Excellent.
So, it's a, it's a federal grant. I believe it's for three years.
Perfect.
I may be mistaken on that. Second, I had a conversation with John Penny, who's our engineer in charge of the ATEC. We should have a full report sometime next week that will get out to the boards. But he basically assured me that he had seen nothing that would prevent us from reopening from an HVAC point of view. We have the capabilities to increase our ventilation, which is priority number one, which is the airflow. If you remember, the heat source air pumps at the primary school, those are all vented to the outside directly. So, that is always coming in as fresh air. We are making upgrades here, but what we have in place right now will, will meet our needs. John will have some recommendation in his report for what we want to look at when we get closer to the winter season, because at that point, you're talking about your dampers needing to close and open more frequently and things like that. But he'll be providing us basically kind of a room-by-room report, and he will allow, or he will notify Gina, Bob, and I of any rooms that we simply can't use because of ventilation issues. And we will pick up those spaces because we're not necessarily using the art room or the music room because they're going into the classrooms. So, we really feel comfortable with our space requirements for our classes. At HPS, just to give you an example, the, the preschool room that was across the hall from the nurse's office will become our second nurse's office because it's in close proximity to the nurse. It's right near the doorway for parents to do pickup if they have to come in. And Paula is making arrangements with our preschool class we'll be moved to in the building. So, we're already starting those pieces. The third piece is, I provided you each a calendar. We're asking for some adjustments to the school calendar, and I'll walk you through those. The first thing is, we are recommending that we delay the opening of school to September 9. This will provide us two more days of professional development to work with staff to ensure that they are ready for the opening. October 9 is a practice day for full remote instruction. We hope that we're not mandated before that because of the data, but we definitely want to make sure that everybody has practiced it. So, we're building it into the schedule. We looked at trying to use that Friday because we felt it might be slightly easier for families to do it on a Friday than in the middle of the week. And we were tying it in with the Columbus Day weekend, again, trying to determine what was best for the families. In November, the third is a traditional voting day for us, so we're not normally in session. We typically have an SAU professional development day. That will not take place this year. It will be given back to the building for professional development and instructional collaboration. We, we're going to allow teachers to spend more time because, again, we're, we're also going to be identifying gaps in those first couple of months from last March. So, this will give them the time to plan as opposed to doing some professional development around something that we typically do. The 23rd and 24th, which is the week of Thanksgiving, the 23rd would be a full district remote and cleaning day, kind of as a practice. And the 24th would be a collaboration instructional day, professional development for staff. Now, we, we are in a little discussion. They may flip-flop. We may decide that it's better to clean on Tuesday and have it all shut down, but right now, that's what we had talked about. In December, we are using the, the winter break. And again, we would have two SAU-wide remote days, the 21st and the 22nd, so that all students, again, would be very well-versed in their platform, maybe recall their passwords, all the different things that we ran into when we did remote. And then, the 23rd would be a professional development, collaboration, instructional day for staff. We would come back to you in October or November and discuss second semester based on what's going on with data. You know, we may look and say, okay, it's flu season. Let's take two weeks in February. Time, one will be a vacation week, one will be a remote week, and things like that. But we really, as we continue to see the data change almost daily, we'd really like to make our decisions based on that. So, what I'm going to be asking on deliberations is for you to approve this calendar with those adjustments so we can get it out to family. I will share that the, the Brookline Board did approve those dates, so that's already done for theirs. But I also want to mention that in these unique circumstances, I don't think that the SAU has to be lockstep in everything. Because, again, the data from the Hollis School District could be different than the co-op or different from Brookline. So, you know, we may have a, a cleaning day because somebody was symptomatic or positive, and we want to take the extra precaution. That doesn't mean we would close the whole SAU. And I think at this point, that covers everything we needed to go over for the revised plan. And I think you had suggested that public input would be next.
I think the suggestion was that we got to talk, then public input, and then us again.
Yeah, I think what we want to do is, we want to get into the plan and some of the red line. I don't want to limit it to the red line. If you want to delve a little deeper because I think we, there was some additional work we wanted to do left over from last time. So, why don't we get into that? And we can do, just go, I don't know, page by page, or we can go straight to the red line. Fine with the, we'll just open it up to the members to get into the, into the plan.
I thought we were going to do public input first.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna get a first at bat, and then we'll have input, and then we'll come back and have any final discussions, I think.
Yeah, that is what I proposed.
That's okay. All right. Who's up?
We're just going to kind of go through section by section?
Yeah, let's just go top to bottom. Yes, by section, sure.
We can, yeah.
Okay, I guess I'll start. So, I guess I have a question. Under the, the health and safety guidelines, are we, do we need to define fever, like, above a certain temperature?
Yeah, DHHS has set that as 100.4.
Okay. And so, are we going to communicate that?
Yes.
Yes, that'll be communicated. And as I said earlier, these questions will match the new guidelines from DHHS and will include a specific temperature.
Okay. On that point, will you be publishing these specifics to all families before the start of school?
Yes.
I have a question about the 10 days versus 14 days. I know that comes from the state, and maybe this has already been explained, but there's just one place that it says any student or staff who was asymptomatic but tests positive, 10 days. And then, it's anyone who is exposed or suspected or confirmed COVID, 14 days. I don't understand that discrepancy.
Yep. So, if you're exposed, it might take a few additional days for symptoms to show up. So, that's why it's 14 days instead of the 10 days, giving you a few more days.
And you don't have to have a negative test to then come back?
No.
You just wait the 10 days?
Correct. Because you could have a negative test on day one, but on day four, the symptoms appear and you could test positive.
I think she's talking about somebody who has a positive test doesn't have to then produce a negative test to show that they're clear to come back?
Not per the guidelines.
No. No, they do not.
Okay. I'll say I've read about this, and the guidelines are what they are because it's presumed that either you've positive tested or had symptoms and had the disease, you're not, according to what I've read from DHHS and CDC guidelines, not that I agree with it, that technically at a certain point, you're no longer contagious even if you're still symptomatic.
Okay.
So, not requiring a negative test to come back to school is per guidelines, as I've read them. Is that essentially correct, or am I mistaken?
From, I'm sorry, it's hard to hear you, but from what I heard, it, it sounded accurate.
Not that I agree with it, but...
And again, keep in mind that there's a great deal, on any occasion, you know, not just including a pandemic, there's a great deal of conversation that occurs between the nurses and the administration when we're making decisions about this and evaluating each case, you know, in the context of what the guidelines are.
Another question that I, I don't recall having the answer to is during that 14- Another question that I, I don't recall having the answer to is during that 14-day quarantine, will that student pivot into remote learning? And if it's a teacher, will they be teaching remotely or will they have a sub? Or how will that work?
Yes. We, from a, from a legal standpoint, we are not allowed to deny a child an education for, for 14 days. So they absolutely will pivot into remote learning as, as well as, as the teacher. That assumes obviously that people are healthy enough to be able to participate in instruction.
Okay. And so that if it's a student, then that student would be assigned one of the remote learning teachers for two weeks and then come back to their in-school teacher after two weeks?
So there are some finer aspects that are still in, under discussion.
Okay. So that hasn't been finalized yet, how, how the pivot will work with?
At the present moment, what you're describing is correct. We would like and are in discussions about what we would call a concept called a Zoom room. So that way the teacher could just be in the room and that individual who was part of their class that is quarantined could access that. That is a, an item that will be discussed with our workforce.
So that sounds reasonable for first or second grade perhaps, but in the upper grades where there's differentiation in math and reading levels, et cetera, how do we address? I know that two weeks isn't the longest period, but it's also not the shortest. If someone is in one level of class and we have remote learning instructors, teachers dedicated to the remote learning presentations, do they have the certifications? Are they able to keep up with the various levels that are being taught so that that kid who's in remote learning is getting the appropriate lesson level?
Well.
Or instructional level. I, I know that the homework could be delivered, but instructional level?
Again, I think it'd be premature to give the answer because I don't know how many students are returning. I don't know how many teachers are returning, remaining remote. And that's why really the two major options that we're planning for are in-person and remote. Remote probably, if 100% remote probably being the easiest. Face-to-face being the most difficult. So registration goes out Saturday and we'll start to get those numbers and we'll have a better sense of where we're at, at our next meeting.
To answer your, the question about the different levels. So math will be taught a little bit differently this year.
I'm so sorry.
Math is taught a little, will be taught a little bit differently this year. For the most part, students will remain in their group and there will be small group instruction to address specific needs of smaller groups within the class. And that might be done electronically or that might be done in a separate room with appropriate physical distancing and/or Plexiglas. But, but the traditional movement for, for all students to move during math, that will not take place to allow all the spaces to remain clean and assigned to a particular student.
So can I just say that I think we morphed from our health and safety, Rob has asked us to go through. I didn't mean to go in the wrong direction.
I want to be crisp about when we move to another section. So I'd like to stick to health and safety and then when we're done, we'll move on, if that's okay?
So I do have a health and safety question.
Absolutely.
And I'd like to get back to everything Gina mentioned just now, please, when, when it's appropriate. So during the presentation from the principals, they just generally referenced under these health and safety redlined items, that they would all prompt a student who hasn't had to have a test to come back and be assessed by the nurse as to whether they could stay or not. But I imagine that if they have a fever, that's an exception. I mean, you're not, you might, I just wanted to clarify. At some point, somebody, one of you two guys mentioned.
So if they say yes on that power school check-in, if it's yes, I have a fever, they're obviously not coming to school.
Correct, correct.
If they were, so they stayed home, but you know, you didn't take them to the doctor. They stayed home.
No, no, I understand. But my point is that the comment that was made was if you say yes to any of these, you come into the school and get assessed.
No.
But that wouldn't be the case of fever.
If you say yes to any of them, you're home. And when you're ready to come back, right, they come and see you.
Yes. So if you say yes to any of them, you're home. And then that list will be given to the nurse to then start communicating with those families directly to really dig into the exact symptoms and the exact reason why they're home. So we can kind of figure out what the, what the plan will be for that family and, you know, what their direction is if they will be going to their doctor, if they believe they will be tested, et cetera, just to get more information so that we're not, I mean, I think communication is just key in this, in this situation.
So my last question on this topic, I'm not pretending to be a medical professional, but the list of symptoms for COVID-19 that is generally published around the media, that my doctors talk to me about, et cetera, looks a lot like a lot of other bugs that kids pass around and adults get. I'm not asking a medical question here. I'm not asking you to be the nurse and answering it. But I think how will we distinguish, especially during cold and flu season, which will start in, you know, typically we start seeing the kids mixing, so October, the masks will help a ton. How do we distinguish that? I mean, how do you, are you confident that our spillover room, the second room, the isolation room in each building can actually accommodate the number of kids who come, who show symptoms that are questionable? And do we have, I know this leaps, I know it leaps, do we have the staff to pivot for that many kids all at once? So?
So the answer to that question is our, our amazing school nurses.
They're amazing.
Whose job it is to evaluate, you know, work collaboratively with their building administrators to, to make decisions. We have full faith in them to be able to do this because what you're talking about really is going to be an issue, that we may have to have students that need to go into quarantine who may not have COVID, but have other symptoms that we are not able to, to confirm. So I have full faith in our nurses. I think adding the substitute nurse position that we have added and are currently interviewing for will also help in addition to having that extra, you know, substitute for supervision purposes. So I'm confident in the work that, that they do on a daily basis.
I have a question kind of along the same lines. You know, what kind of communication, I guess what triggers communication to parents of other classmates if a student has symptoms prior to actually having a positive or negative COVID test?
What we typically do is the nurse, if she had a concern, would contact the SAU because there are certain pieces of this. COVID will be one, another example that we deal with every year is whooping cough. That requires in these cases, a call to DHHS. They would either call one of the three of us back or the school nurse, typically the nurse because she actually knows more medical. And they would advise us in the next steps.